Okay, call this meeting to order.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna have brought.
Okay, I'm here.
Mr. LaFoy.
Right here.
Mr. Flores.
Brother.
Ms. Williams. Ms. Salina, present. Dr. Mackey.
Present, and we have Mr. Elizondo, Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Lane Howard, Executive Director of HR, we have Alita Bera, Assistant Superintendent, and Jackie Perez.
Okay.
We got Joe in Maryland.
I have to read this, I'm sorry. This regular, this special meeting of the Judson Board of Trustees is here, call at 7:00 PM, 6:00 PM. I am very pleased that you have taken time to join us this evening as the Judson Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, policy, and oversee the management of the district. We are responsible for approving budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and to listen to reports from the superintendent. We are not here to make administrative or management decisions pertaining to the daily operation of the district. This is the responsibility of the superintendent, complying with the state government code, open meetings, tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. This is a meeting in public, not a meeting of the public, as our guests, you are welcome to observe and listen. These proceedings are being video and recorded and will become Judson's permanent legal record. In order that the tape adequately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile phones and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings are recorded accurately, I might have to ask for order periodically should I notice that disruptions are interfering with our recording capabilities. Once again, on behalf of the board, we extend to each of you a sincere welcome. Thank you for your interest at the Judson School.
Okay, do we have pledge? Let's go ahead and do the pledge. Williams, give the pledge.
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to describe how close we used to be, and how close we are today, and how much we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The question that the Congress recommended.
Okay, do we have any special guests? Okay, section.
June.
Are June and Darren the guests? Oh, hi ma'am, how are you? You are present. Close session pursuant to Texas government code section 5.071, consultation with attorney general superintendent evaluation. Okay, and pursuant to Texas code section 5.1, consider and discuss the superintendent evaluation. We are now going into executive session at 6:04.
Don't keep yourself entertained, you've got colors. You've got nine moments left.
Do you want him to bang the gavel again too? All right, well, we'll come back from closed session at 8:05, yeah, we're back. So, emotion, no, no action was taken in closed session, and a motion was made to move the discussion for today on all of the policy updates to the next regular scheduled board meeting. A motion was made by June Adair, and I seconded that discussion, Gilbert.
I want to amend the motion that we do at least 5A. I'd like to get started on this, because I don't really want to be here the next board meeting and go through the same process again. We've put this off once, and just do.
Second down the line.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, go ahead.
All those.
All those in favor of the motion?
Amendment.
Yeah, the amendment.
You're working the amendment.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Richard.
Richard opposed before I could offer that, but okay.
Now go back.
Now I'll go back to the motion.
Right.
The original motion, no, all those in favor? Motion by saying, oh, the original motion.
The original motion was to table Hoke.
Right. All those in favor, signify by saying, of the motion as amended. Signify by saying aye.
No, June, it's the other way. It's not as amended, we did the amended motion, but the. So now we're voting on.
We go back to the, as amended, yeah, so.
So we're voting, the aye vote is to, just do A.
Correct.
Right.
So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Rich. Rich can leave and go take care of your kids.
Sweet. All right, then moving right along, do you want to take back over here?
Okay, consider and take possible action regarding approval of policy update 98. Okay, I'll go through number 8.1. Anybody has anything concerning board members authority?
If you give me one second, let me just.
Yep.
Try to define.
I was pulling up my notes too.
Okay, it's right here.
I know, but see, my notes are like this, so I need to quickly.
Oh, I see.
See, I wrote down, I'm just gonna look over your shoulder then, but I don't think I have.
That's fine. We'll look there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I'm there. Um, I'm looking.
Fantastic.
Are they all together, are they listed? 5A and 6A? No, we're not. We don't have policies from the.
And this is, this is all included.
Jack, can you help me with which one of those policies you're interested in?
I didn't sign it yet, here, I'll sign it. I haven't signed it. I was just reading those, make sure it was updated. Oops, sorry.
It's on page nine.
Okay, you know it.
The very top, access to information.
On which board book? On, on, oh, so it would be a document? Okay, on board book, and it has like one dash, et cetera. You know which one, is it 117? 121?
BB local that we're looking at is on page 22. That's where the one we called.
Okay, thank you.
Because then you put the finish point in there, that's where I put the point, thank you so much. And I did find it in a previous envelope, I was trying to write it wrong. So, um, on that policy.
Richard won't sign it, because he didn't vote for it, so he won't sign it. June wants to read it first.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I turn on my phone? Can I talk, like President?
Yes, yes, say it.
I'm not gonna give Richard any different.
The question that I had was, when it talked about board members and their authority, then didn't it have to do with the, with the legal policy that we also talked about, that we were only supposed to ask for personnel information if it had to do with something we were doing? Is that what that policy is talking about? Because this is the local policy, so can anyone talk to me about what this BBE local is doing? Don't everybody talk at once?
Well, it's, June, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
There are limitations on this, if you look down under the limitation, which is where I think this needs to be going, and it says that the board member shall not have access to confidential student records unless the member is acting in his or her official capacity and has a genuine educational interest in the record, and according to policy F F. Okay, that's one thing. And the blue is what they're, they're adding, the tax, yes.
This is the recommendation from.
The tax is when we have the workshop, yes.
Update.
And so, none of these things are district recommended, were just accepted, were they recommended?
No, we sat down and for.
No, this is update 98.
This is the only tax, this, the person, this is.
We didn't discuss that, this was.
This is the update, okay.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
This is what your organization recommends.
Because of the legislature or whatever, they might have changed things, yes, okay.
Okay, so the only thing I wanted the boards to vote on page 23, if I have the right page number. Was the second paragraph that was in blue, that says, "The district shall track and report any requests, including the cost of responding to one or more requests by any individual board member for 200 or more pages of material in a 90-day period." And so, where did that come from? Well, see, it came legal, it put it, the legislative part, they put that in the legal. So, I was trying to understand why it was added in the local, because, like you said, the House bill part is in legal, we don't get to choose that.
Well, but we want our, our policies to be in line with what we.
Right.
And it's in the legal.
Well, that's right, but we want our, our local policies to be in line with legal.
Well, we shouldn't supplement, if it's in legal, we shouldn't repeat it in local. It should, it should be, if it's in legal, we shouldn't be repeating it in local. Exactly. So, what kind of administrative burden will this put on Dr. Mackey, Mr. Lemscom, to keep track of every 90 days, 90 days, how many pages of reports or whatever requests are made? Is, is there going to be a tracking system needing to be put in place to do this every 90 days, or how, what do we have? You do the tracking. But you already have something that will tell you every 90 days what's going on? Okay, cool. Can I find it? Thank you.
Okay. How about number two? Safety programs, risk management, security personnel. Oh.
Oh.
Okay, you want to vote on each one individually?
With a motion for everything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. On number two, Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, I agree with the line of, "The chief of police should be held accountable and fortunately superintendent." Uh, Mr. Sauer's not here, and he's the one I was gonna ask, why did we remove officer standards and education on the first paragraph? Why was that removed? And Mr. Kerschner isn't here to talk for the police either, so.
Yeah, but they're, because they're not under, officer, not under the principles.
No, that's not what she's.
Just because they're assigned to a school.
That's not what she's talking about, I have, I have a question on that too, but she's talking about this right here.
...by Detective Commissioner on law enforcement.
It's Dr. Mackey, it's the very, very top.
Officers' standards and that's, that's not a law enforcement, that's, they don't operate under. No, no, it doesn't say Texas Education.
You find it, Dr. Mackey.
They're making it so it's a standard, that is not.
So if you look under the Texas, if you look under the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, they don't have a section that says what the standards are and what education is required for their officers.
They operate, they don't operate under.
No, no, that's not what I said.
There's no, there's not a document.
Under the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement.
Correct, they are not operating under.
Then what are we, what are we grading them on? How do we know that they're qualified and certified to be doing the job?
They get certifications, they, they do have the Texas law certification.
That's what they're here.
Now, I'm trying to see what it's called.
So if it's, if it's called something else, then.
Is this the one she's looking at?
Yeah. Why we cut that out? I have a question about this, but she has a question about this.
But to me, it's right there, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, oh, period.
Oh, so just all of it?
Yes.
Okay, I can buy that. So don't just isolate their standards and education.
But everybody has independent police officers that come on their.
So then you go down, I don't have a problem with the chief of police reporting superintendent.
That's law.
Obviously, that's legal.
Right, right.
But I do have a problem with the next one.
Who is one of the officers?
I want to know, Dr. Mackey, why are we deleting campus-based duty where our police officers are reporting to the principal?
Um, that.
On page 24.
That right there is a hazard recommendation, this is local, yeah, I, I think, I think it needs to be under the principal, and, but that's the officer's decision.
I, yeah, I agree, I'm sorry, that's something I felt very strongly, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you if you weren't done, Dr. Mackey, but, but the way that's all cut out, I'm confused on a police officer, it's a little different on the elementary levels because there's not generally a police officer on the campuses the whole time, but when you're getting to middle school and high school, there are police officers, and cutting that all out makes it sound like they're, they're independent of the principal, and they're not.
I think.
I think.
Okay, so let's, I'm going to.
Uh, Mr. Howard has something about it.
Sir, the, the item was to address the management, personnel management of that individual, so for example, Dr. Mackey manages his cabinet, we are his staff, Ms. Bera has staff under her. What this is basically saying is those police officers that are assigned to a high school, their manager is still the chief of police, that is who is evaluating them, that is who is disciplining them, that is who is handling all of their personnel matters, and that's what this means, that the principal, the principal is not the one conducting the evaluation of the police officer.
There's another hand in the back too, if that's a good.
Page what?
Two of two.
Or talk about business, if that's where they, 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 their normal duty, the business of police officers, and, 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 and,
use the current year's evaluation in, in a dismissal process, now it is saying you can go back beyond that current year and use, uh, two years consecutive prior to that.
I agree, however, this line in two A, what was deleted is whether or not it was done at the current district or previous district. So what I wanted to know is if the super- if you need to use the evaluation from a previous district...
Then why did we hire?
Then, then I, I don't think we should remove that because as much as we get employee turnover right now, you may not have it.
I have a question about that too.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Well, I mean, how do we know the criteria, I mean, it's, it's an evaluation not done by us or completed by us?
Well, there's a...
We had ac-...
There's a state law on how we do appraisal, baby.
Sure.
Right.
Is that true?
Sure. But if we had access to that and there were concerns with previous appraisals, then why did we hire the individual just to turn around a year or so later and use that same criteria to... Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's, uh, you know, that, that's a different circus, it's not a matter of just an evaluation. You know, it's...
No, I...
Doing this, uh...
Down, money cut.
Exigency.
Sure.
And who, who, who want to keep, I...
Yeah, and now they still may be good teachers, but if we're going to have to cut some, then you have to look at some, you know?
And you may, and if you don't look at what they have before, that's unfair.
So it's not, it's not an evaluation.
Well, it could work both ways in that sense. I mean, it could be a positive, right, and...
Yeah.
It's important.
So that's, uh, yeah, and hopefully we don't have to go through that again, but you never know.
Well, I gave my, I gave my little two cents, but y'all have to...
But I think, uh, when a new employee comes from another district, I think normally, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Howard, normally they will bring you the copy of their last evaluation. Am I correct in that, ma'am? Oh, it's requested, okay. So if you don't request it, they don't have to bring it in? Okay, do we request it?
No.
Oh, oh, that's to the hiring administrator, okay, okay.
When we're going through this, you know, if we have to go to this level where we have to do a riff, you know, a lot of times it's last in, first out.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yes, correct.
And you lose, you lose some good teachers that way too, you know, it works both ways.
Well, that's what I was saying, it could work both ways. Good and bad.
Number...
You guys want to just leave it, keep it out?
Yeah, I can go.
Number five, DFFB Local Reduction in Force Program Change.
Yeah, it seems like it's the same thing. The same thing.
One was because of financial, among the program change.
All, all included.
Yeah.
I only have a question on that one.
I have a question on the next one.
Okay. Number six, DGVA Local Personnel Management Relations Employee Complaints and Grievances. Number six.
I have a question.
Which is on page thirty-six. Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
I just, the biggest change in here is changing everything from seven days to ten days. I was just going to inquire why and what, what are the pros and what are the cons of moving from seven to ten days?
Yeah.
Well, I had, I had talked to Dr. Mackey about this and really, one of the big concerns was if you, we had said ten working days, that's two weeks. Person filed a grievance, that's two weeks there, they got, well, they got ten days to respond.
Right.
Okay, and then you, uh, two weeks to respond, then another two weeks to respond, you know? So you're a month out already, you know, before this, and yeah, we'd like to take care of our grievances a lot faster, but, you know, we, we all know that everybody...
We're allowed for life.
Sometimes the administration can't get to it, and then if the grieving party wants to add their two weeks to it, the, you know, you can go two months, three months, or it's actually hurt. So I had suggested, well, actually, I had suggested ten calendar days, which really would be around seven workdays.
How do you, oh, calendar, that means you include the weekend?
Well, and this doesn't include some of that language though.
Oh, I, well, it's, it's fair to both sides, I think, if it, if we're both operating under the same rules and it's, uh... You know? But, but it was, now, this is seven days...
From the date of the written...
So seven days, is that seven calendar days or seven workdays?
That's saying from the date, that's, well, that doesn't specify that though.
It's not, it's not calendar days, well, this won't be the same.
That's calendar days when you say, say it like that.
Well, no, seven calendar days is a lot less than seven workdays.
Correct, correct.
Now, we said ten calendar days, that would be around seven workdays.
We said seven workdays. If you do, if you do seven workdays, that's nine days. If you do ten calendar days, it's just one day extra.
Right, but this is just saying ten days after receipt of the written complaint. It doesn't say business, working, calendar.
Well, the reason, the reason I put this after this was simply because, so we can expedite as much as we can.
Right, right.
It'll make the time longer.
You know?
Right.
Right.
Sometimes by the time we hear the grievance, the issue's dead and moves out.
Miss, Mr. Macias?
Uh, I, I agree, I, I think we can...
The, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
But can we specify whether it's calendar or...
If it's seven days?
Oh, no, I think that's what he was saying.
Right.
If it's seven days, it's workdays. Seven days is workday.
Seven workdays?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but can we, can we put workdays in there? Because it doesn't say workdays.
You can say seven.
I agree, thank you.
You can say seven workdays.
Thank you.
And what page is that on?
There's a couple of pages it's on.
Thirty-eight?
You don't want to stick the word work there for the guy?
Here, mine's five of six, I, oh, yes, see, here's one right there.
That way it's policy.
And then there's...
Oh, okay, so we're going to leave it at seven workdays?
Workdays.
Seven workdays, okay. Did you notice that? Miss Perez is going to read seven workdays.
For all those spots, there's a bunch of them, all of them. My five-year-old says that a lot. Oh, okay.
Okay, so that means on page, on page forty where it says ten workdays, we need to... Okay, you'll find them all?
She will.
I'm pretty confident in her.
He said something about a representative.
Oh, yeah, it said, that was at the very beginning, the first part of that, if I recall correct, about a representative and the line was changed and...
Where is that?
And it said that you could call in and stuff like that, right? You could represent, I can go back and tell you. Sorry, he's asking me, he asked me a question. It's on page three of six, what you're asking.
Page three of six?
Up here. He asked about the represent- with the representative.
Participating person or by telephone conference call? Who, are we talking about the teacher or somebody representing the teacher?
Somebody representing, uh, the grieving party.
Right.
Technology, welcome to technology, I mean, it's, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, so then we're okay?
Yep.
Okay, anybody? Okay. How about seven, DH Local Employee Standards of Conduct?
I have a question about that too.
We had to add this policy, but I know we had some issues, um, in the past where authorities did not report, so...
Report?
Last task recommendation, huh?
That's what I was going to ask, is where that...
And I'm pretty sure that's for all the districts, it's not just for Judson.
My question is on page forty-five.
Hold on, ma'am. On DH Local, what's your question, ma'am?
Why didn't you delete all that, Richard?
That's, that was my question, yeah. Ms. Howard's trying to answer, if that's okay.
Oh, Ms. Howard? Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. Out of order, Dr. Mackey. Then you want, Ms. Howard, too?
Yeah, Ms. Howard, go.
Um, it was deleted because the, uh, language in there was quite expansive, as you can tell. It's already addressed in the employee handbook on page fifty-one under Dress and Grooming, and actually, the language in the employee handbook gives the campus administrator a lot more authority to address, um, dresses, address and grooming issues with the staff. So the language reads that a employee of the district must meet and exceed the dress code that is established for our students.
Okay. Mr. Flo- Mr. Flores?
Well, I'm good.
Your co-? Yes, ma'am.
My issue is...
Yes.
The board does not vote on, on the HR employee handbook.
Right, on dress code.
And, um, we have had some issues in the past, and I personally, and I'm only speaking for myself, I like it in the policy. I think it's very clear, anybody can go to the policy and they can see, and this is the board's policy, and so, um, I don't see any reason to remove it.
Problem?
Right, and I also, when you give it to the campus, I, my question though is, June, if, if we do delete that, it seems more in the campus, but it also means less uniformity across the district if you're... And I kind of thought that that was the whole point of the dress codes and that some of the standards we set is more of a uniformity across the district, and by deleting that, to me, I, I would think that there would be less uniformity and more discretion left to the principals, but that may not always, you have to keep in mind that the principals we have in place right now may not always be the principals in place and discretionary stuff can change, and I, I would rather leave it because it seems more clear to me, and it's in our policy right here, so I, that's my preference is to leave it.
But, but are we talking about a standard dress po-? Hold on, ma'am. In each campus, right? I mean, we have a district standard policies, not each campus designating their own policy.
Correct.
Um, would you like me to read it?
Correct.
Uh, the dress and grooming of district employees should be professional, clean, neat, modest, non-disruptive, and appropriate for their job assignments. In addition, supervisors may establish additional standards as approved by the superintendent. All employees shall follow a daily minimum dress code that exceeds that of students. The minimum dress code shall be business casual, shorts, hats, caps, flip-flops, faded, torn jeans are not appropriate, tattoos shall be covered. Failure to follow policy as described may result in disciplinary action up to and including separation from employment.
That's on the district...
Handbook.
That's the employee handbook, yes, sir. But that's not our policy, so that's why I think it should stay in policy.
This is a little bit more extensive than...
It is.
Right, right. And that's what she said, that it was kind of long.
Superintendent said it was fine, I didn't get what you meant.
Well, but I, I would probably, I would mirror what's in the handbook in here, instead of...
Or should they, exactly, or the handbook should mirror ours. I agree they should match. I agree they should match, but... Are we having any issues, Dr. Mackey, with this? I mean, or Ms. Howard?
Yeah, we always have issues.
I mean, right, well, I didn't read it like that.
No, but...
I made significant issues in one way or the other.
We always have issues, we just address them. We know, we send, you know, we have to send people home, let them re-dress, we do all kinds of stuff, but they'll, they'll try and do very inappropriate stuff, so we have to always protect them.
Are you talking about the kids or are you talking about the professionals?
No, we're talking about the gro- we're talking about the professionals, the grown-ups. Okay.
I've been out too long. Uh, eight, School Day.
There's some changes on there, I don't know why that's there.
Okay. Nine, EAI Local, EIA Local Academic Achievement Grading Progress Reports to Parents. Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Well, I was just curious where all of this came from, because we're just totally cutting and off. That's what I was...
This is HB five?
That's what I thought, I was, just want to make sure, okay, okay.
Is that correct?
Yep, just want to make sure, thank you.
Okay.
Is there any part, do you, that, the, as far as makeup work, or is that...
Yeah, we have a particular place that...
That's our grading.
Uniform throughout the district?
That's our grading.
No, 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 we don't want uniforms.
Well, no, not uniforms.
No, no, no.
About, uh, the policy as far as makeup work.
Okay.
You know?
It's in, yeah.
Okay. We teach, we test policy.
Oh, go ahead, ma'am.
We teach, we test policy.
It's on page one of three in there.
We're okay?
Yeah.
Barra, okay? Uh... Ten.
Wait, Dr. Mackey, remember you, you told us you wanted to wait until the end of this school year and then you'll bring that policy about, um, whatever you needed to do.
No, it's not a policy, I'll change it. It's not a policy, I can change it.
You're talking about the grading, the grading.
It's not a policy, I just changed it.
Okay.
Okay. Yes. Ten, FEA Local Attendance Compulsory Attendance. Anybody, anything changed, sir?
I want to know why one of the kids at the school is going to be a voting clerk?
That's, you gotta be eighteen. Do we have a lot of curbs that work? Oh.
And they have to do it in advance, they have to serve with the principal in advance, and, and they have to come back and show that they actually do serve.
I think it's a good thing, I think it's a good thing.
This was a law that was passed by the legislature.
Yes, and June, this is a good...
It was passed by the legislature.
I think this is a good thing.
Saying that they could be judges.
This is a very good thing, June. There's a lot of things we don't teach in high school, and this is promoting voting and promoting, yes, yes.
I just wanted to know, you know...
I think it's... I agree, but this is, there's some things that we don't teach in school, this is a good one.
No, but it's not, it's not a law that we have to let them out.
Ah, no, no, no.
No.
Because if I've been absent fifteen, twenty times, then I'll say, oh, I want to be a judge for two days. No, I, that's up to the principal.
I think we should.
Sir, they don't even go vote.
Hey, no.
Okay.
I was voting in eight, some of us.
No problem. Eleven, FEC Local Attendance Attendance for Credit. FEC, I don't see any, oh, they, just a few things there. How about on page, page fifty-three?
Some of us are, don't worry.
Where it says Excused Absences for Compulsory Attendance Determination. They can't take off for religious days anymore? Yes, sir, Joe?
That's actually, Dr. Mackey, that's actually a hard code on, you just removed it, and many of those in our comments, because they add some other stuff, like, for instance, like the voting part, or if I have a child and I'm a common student in high school and I go to a position, and I bring back a note from the position, that, that, that excludes the annual, that's, 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 that's on, on, on seventeen in our comments, too bad.
Okay.
But wouldn't you say, Mr. Gonzales, that it's just simpler because the new rules are under FEA legal? That's why I found them?
Yes.
So we just took them out of local because now they made them legal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we added, right. So, so we still have, they still get off of that, Mr. Gonzalez.
Oh, okay.
It's just a legal policy.
Oh, okay. Uh, FFB Local Student Welfare Crisis Intervention. I don't have that either.
Maybe that's why I didn't have questions.
Is that a miss?
There's a hand in, Dr. Mackey, oh, okay, well, there's, is that the answer? Okay.
Hey, that was cool, good. Just one thing, uh, Mr. Salinas, Dr. Mackey, when we were reading that part about attendance and all that, I think, um, maybe there needs to be a little bit of checking on the committees that the schools are supposed to have, or that complaints in the past, that the campuses didn't have those attendance committees to do those things that the policy did.
That's the principal designates, uh, teachers or something to go with it.
But they should, they should have them, they should be doing it.
Can you check on that, Mr. Smith?
I'll, I'll, I'll send an email.
Send an email of every, I want to know every, uh, attendance committee person serving throughout the district, various campuses.
They usually send that to the services.
Yeah, just give me a copy.
I've got to go, but this is it, I think this is where we're stopping.
Yeah, I mean, that's it, we can vote now.
Yep.
Okay.
A little while ago when y'all talked about EC local, you said there was no changes at that School Day? That's a brand-new policy, that's never been in our, in our policy before, and we recommend that be...
Oh, so that's why they're blue?
Yep.
It's been all the blue.
That's what I think too, but they didn't do that, so I just wanted to know, it's a brand-new policy, it's never been...
FEC. FEC.
EC. School Day.
Do you know, I, I think all the millions are pretty central. I think, like, they're...
Okay. You've, uh, we're going to vote from item, uh, A, one through twelve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed likewise, ma'am. Yes, one more thing. Consider Take Part Regarding Approval Budget Amendment to the General Operating Fund to Pay for National Finals Championship Competition Expenses for the Judson High School Orchestra.